Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Ward of City Council meeting for November 5th, 2018. Please stand in the information. I'm Bobby, call about us on screen.
Good afternoon, councilpersons. I don't know if all of you have heard, but I was told one of the ex-councilperson, Andrew Williams, passed today. I think it was the day, I believe it was, I got the message, so not sure if any of you all heard that, but they had moved him to hospice, but he did pass on today, I was told. So I just want to make sure we notate that and let you know that. So praying for his family. And it's probably appropriate, he served our community, for us just to take a moment of silence and remembrance of Councilperson Andrew Williams. Christian God, we thank you for this day. God, we thank you how you continue to bless us and keep us. God, we just want to ask you to continue to be with us, help us to be who you would have us to be. God, we thank you for another day that we have not seen before. We thank you for bringing us through dangerous seen and unseen. God, I ask you, please be with this council, be with all of them, be with their families. God, continue to watch over them, give them the wisdom they need to do the job that you've put them in a seat to handle and to represent our community. God, continue to watch over them, God, and help them to have peaceful days. And Lord, help them also, Lord, to know that as long as they depend on you, they can make it through all this and can make the decisions that need to be made. God, I ask you to bless all of the persons present, bless our leaders of our community. Father, God, I ask you to bless our mayor, our first responders, God, be with them and protect them and watch over them, keep a hedge protection around them. I pray, God, for Andrew Williams and his family, God, in this table of bereavement. We thank you, God, for his service, service not only to his family, but to this community, God. We ask you also, God, just to give his family a sense of peace and a sense of understanding, God, that we all got to bypass this way, but, God, help them to understand and remember all the good times. God, we ask you to bless us as we have this meeting, God. I ask you to please help us all come together and let those things be decided, be decided in peace and in harmony, and that it be for the good of the community. I ask, God, in the name of Jesus the Christ, amen.
All allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Councilperson White. Councilperson Stotny.
Present.
Councilperson Yon.
Present.
Councilperson Maples.
Here.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Here.
Councilperson Gill.
Here.
Councilperson Owen.
Very here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Here.
Councilperson Samuel.
Here.
Let the record reflect all nine are present.
I need approval of our minutes for our regular proceeding for October 15th, 2018.
So moved.
Got a motion in second. All those in favor signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
Call as opposed. Motion carries. I need approval of the agenda with, there's been a request to table number nine under old business. Do you approve the agenda with tabling of that?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
Call as opposed. Motion carries. Approval of the claims, Heather. Civil city.
We have civil city claims tonight for $953,223.59.
And you will have the PO and these things, are they going to be signed? Okay. And why are those appropriations, so they don't have that? I just saw tires in our office supply and what? You went through all of the notes that I had?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
So they're in order?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then, if anybody has a question, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, as submitted. Second.
Got a motion in second to approve the claims of $953,223.59. Any further questions or discussion? If seeing none, all those in favor signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
Call as opposed. Motion carries.
Parks. Parks are $107,188.82.
Motion to approve, as submitted. Second.
Got a motion in second to approve the parks claim of $107,188.82. Is there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Report the clerk.
Just one quick thing. Bobby, I want to thank you for letting us know about Andrew. Myself and Councilperson Ellis served four years with Andrew, and Andrew was a gentleman, and he cared a lot about this community and his constituents, and so it saddens me, I know he's in a much brighter place, happier place, but it's just still saddens that we lost him.
So number nine was tabled, so move on to Heather, 2018 OR 68. An ordinance transferring certain items within the same budget was passed on first and second. Any changes?
No changes.
Then I will entertain a motion for third and final.
Motion to approve, 2018 OR 69, at third and final reading?
68.
I'm sorry. 68.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion in second to pass, 2018 OR 68, on the third and final. All those in favor signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. There again, we get the 2018 OR 69, it's the ordinance of additional appropriation that passed on the first and second. This is for the Masonic law, same amount of tax abatement, economic development abatement for professional services. So if nobody has any questions, I'll officially open up public hearing. Anybody have any questions? At this time, I'm going to officially open up public hearing. If there's anybody here that wants to speak for against the additional appropriation of the $30,000, the fix of the roof, I believe, but then it's not, help fix the roof. Please, huh?
Sorry.
Passag?
Yeah.
Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, officially close public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, 2018 OR 69, on the third and final reading.
Got a motion in second to pass, 2018 OR 69, third and final. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Move on to new business. I just put this on because, as you know, we had that special meeting that was scheduled and we canceled since it was passed, talking up interlocal agreement with the county. I asked Larry to check to see where things are on that. I heard it was not signed, so I didn't know, so we just want to just publicly fill in the numbers.
So I contacted Scott Lewis, who's the attorney for the county commissioners, and Mr. Lewis indicated that the county council did in fact pass the interlocal agreement. However, they were also in the process of passing their budgets, and I'm sure that you all find this very hard to believe, but it's a hectic time when you're passing your budget. And they had a substantial number of budgets they had to deal with because there's a new procedure where a non-elected board's budget has to be reviewed and audited and passed by the county council, and they didn't sign the interlocal agreement correctly. Some of the folks missed it, so I know, I know. So the county commissioners didn't act on it because they wanted to get it in front of them with all the signatures, so it's set for the next meeting, and it's their, actually I saw Dr. Bennett going in today to put his signature on it, so they'll have it signed and ready to go.
Okay, great. Does anybody have any further questions or discussion on that? Okay, then we will, thank you, Larry. We will move on, and we have Les, it's an ordinance for correction, ordinance of 2014 OR 6, and I believe it'd be ordinance number 70. Is that correct?
Yes, this is an ordinance we're asking that you amend that was adopted, the most current version is from 2014, is regarding our flood control ordinance. We are clarifying or expanding the definition of historic district, or historic structure, that is, and specifically, we are amending it to not only reflect structures that are on the national registry of historic places, or the state historic registry, but also our local district, so it expands it a little bit. This gives us more flexibility in the event that we have to, if a property owner has an historic building in our district along the river, if they have to refurbish it or restructure it, they're not held to quite the stringent requirements of the Corps. We believe this, we believe this will allow for them to get a variance if they ever have to deal with the Corps. Right now, they would not be eligible for it.
But federal with the Corps, that doesn't supersede our home role here?
The Corps is, if we do this, that, yes.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have any questions? Seventy. It's 2018 OR 70.
Motion to approve, first and second.
Second.
I got a motion in a second to pass, 2018 OR 70, on the first and the second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Les. Heather, an ordinance transferring certain funds within the same budget, I believe this will be ordinance 2018 OR 71.
These, I believe, are end-of-year transfers for these departments. Hopefully, there won't be too much more before the end of the year.
I noticed in the police, like the 457 match and the HSA contribution, how do they have so much money left in those funds? Was it a miscalculation, or they didn't get people hired in?
Those are budgeted so that if everyone shifts to those types of benefits, but not everyone has, yes.
Got you. I just want the public to know, because there's quite a bit of transfer. Does anybody have any question or comment? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, 18 OR 71, on the first and second.
Got a motion in second to pass, 2018 OR 71, on the first and second. Any further discussions or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And we have an ordinance of additional appropriation, which our public hearing will be on November 19th, which will be 2018 OR 72. I did talk with Larry, and what it is, is they've had a lot of, they didn't get their money, but they had a lot of unforeseen demolitions.
Yes, it's funded by the lean money that we get.
Yeah, they felt short.
It's just appropriating the cash that's in that fund.
He did justify to me that it is well-needed, and those buildings had to come down, so. Would you have anything else to add to that?
Yeah.
Motion to approve, 18 OR 72, on the first and second.
Second.
Got a motion in the second to pass, 2018 OR 72, on the first and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
He gave.
Motion carries. Thank you, Heather. Do we have a council attorney report?
I have nothing.
All right, thank you. And for department heads, we do have the fire department, who is the deputy chief, Bruce D. Ark, and got some good people retiring on us.
Yes. Good evening, hours, everyone. Thank everyone, should have received the email from Chief Hedrick about, we have three retiring early January, excuse me, so we wanted to do, as we've done in the past, go ahead and bring the three additional, three, excuse me, three replacement, not additional, three replacements in early, so we can get them trained, get them on online earlier to, of course, save for overtime, is the plan. So our goal is to get them in December 15th, possibly, but the state, with perf, it's all in their hands with the holidays, so we're going to give it a shot. We will, as soon as we get approval, we will contact the mayor board, and they will contact the candidates, and this week, we will get that scheduled if possible.
And we've done this in the past.
Yes, we did. The last time we hired.
It's more feasible to do it this way, and it is in your budget.
Yes, it is in our budget, taken care of for the last half of the year.
So can I have a motion to give them the go-ahead to give the, I guess it's the mayor's board to release the next three names?
Correct.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
Call as opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Okay, move on to public comment, and we do have two that signed up, so I'll call your name, and please come up and state your name and the address for the record, please. We've got Deborah McMahon.
Hi, everyone. I'm Debbie McMahon, and I live at 835 Spring Street, that is the M Fine Apartments. I'm very happy there. I do have a concern, though. Just recently, the city took 12 of our parking spaces. We are limited there on our parking spaces. They took it from the north end of our parking lot. It's 12 spaces, and they took it for the new tree walk that we guys, you guys are providing for us for the downtown, and I am concerned about that. Like I said, we're limited there, and I would like to ask the city to provide for us a decent crosswalk at Spring and Eighth. It's very busy and very dangerous there for us, and we are being provided a few extra parking spaces across the street from the building. That's very busy there, and a lot of, you know, we take public transportation, some of us do, and I'm concerned for the people that do take public transportation, because they have to, you know, cross that street right there. It's very busy, so I'm asking for a decent crosswalk right there at Eighth and Spring. Okay?
I don't know anything about any parking.
You don't know anything about that? Just take a ride down there and look. The whole north end of the building has been, the parking lot has been taken away from us.
Because they didn't own it.
Pardon me?
Because M Fine didn't own it. City owns that.
Yeah.
We don't own that parking lot.
Right.
M Fine owned the parking lot of property, they didn't own it.
Oh, well, well, I don't know, you know. We moved in there, we didn't know that. We were given those parking spaces, and now they're taking away from us.
The owners of M Fine knew before it happened.
Well, you know, I'm not the owner. I'm not the owner. I just lived there, so, you know, I'd like your help.
We're redoing that intersection.
I see that, I see that, but in the meantime, we have to live there.
Well, I understand that. If it was property, it was not owned by M Fine, so.
Right. I'm just asking for your help. Okay?
But the city is planning to make improvements to the intersection there at Spring to read the crossword.
Right, it's dangerous. It's dangerous there. You know, there's other issues. Yeah, I know, I know you know what I'm talking about. I'm not even getting into that. I just want your help. Okay?
I have a question, or I guess a question for Les. Can the city, or will the city, reach out to, I guess, Tark and see if they can put the stop instead of on the east side of the street, on the west side of the street, where, where, that way, they don't have to cross Spring Street to get on public transportation?
Definitely.
In the same spot, but can we reach out and maybe that?
They need to look better than doing crosswalk.
Anything, anything's better than nothing.
Because when it was originally put there, there was no housing, or not, not like it is now, and that, maybe we could help them out that way.
All right. Thank you.
Also, also, one more point of clarification. The tree walk just goes to Maple Street, it doesn't come all the way up there.
Well, why is that all torn up there? And why do?
Because they didn't have the authority, I guess, to build there. They had nothing good with the tree walk.
No, we're doing, we are doing improvements, though. It's just not specifically that tree walk.
Yeah, it's not the tree walk. Tree walk was down Maple Street.
Well, I'm sorry, I must have been misinformed, because I got this little pamphlet or whatever that I got from the pharmacy that shows, that says it's part of the tree walk, so that's probably some misinformation, too.
We'll look into either the park or move at the.
Bus stop.
Bus stop. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We have Carla Poe. State your name and address for the record, please. Welcome.
Carla Poe, 835 Spring Street. I'm also concerned about the parking. We do have limited parking. The majority of the people in that building are handicapped, so again, crossing the street, I've seen someone almost get hit. My other concern is the recent flooding. The parking lot has flooded twice. The first time it flooded, it did get up in the bottom of people's cars, like on their carpet. The next big flood that we had, it happened so quick, by the time we realized what was happening, I got downstairs, the fire alarm started going off, and by the time I got down there, the water was this deep in our back parking lot. I don't know if that's the city's problem, or if it's M Fine and the drainage, but that second flood, mine was one of five cars that were totaled in that parking lot. I had about a foot of water in the bottom of my SUV, so it totally ruined the car, and four other cars were totaled. My concern is the drainage there, not only our parking lot, but when that was going on, the intersection there of Spring and Eighth, I mean, it was, it was just like a river. Water was flowing, and I'd just like to know if there's any plans to improve the drainage there right now. The museum that's across the street from us, everybody parks up there. Everybody's parked up on that concrete tonight because we know it's raining, they've already got the sandbags down, this building has, the first floor has flooded twice, the people had to be displaced and moved back in. There again, I know this is not all the city's fault, but something needs to be done about the drainage, and we need additional parking, whether that be that the city could maybe give us some parking next to that museum, but it's a really, really bad problem. People are afraid to park there now for fear their cars are going to be totaled. One lady whose car was totaled is a caretender for her brother who lives in Ramsey. That was her only means of transportation, and I mean, we're all low-income in this building. The lady did not have the money to go out and buy a car like that, so it's definitely a big problem there with the flooding, and if there's anything the city could do, it would be greatly appreciated.
Have you talked to Andy Crouch, our city engineer, to see if so much drainage?
No, no, no. They've come, what happens is there's a grate there, and the water just comes so fast, the grate literally, just the water comes up, and like I say, my neighbor moved my car, I threw him my keys, but by the time he could got out there, it was over his knees. So, I mean, I think it's been a problem in the past, you know, living here all my life, you know, there's been problems with flooding, but I mean, this is, this is getting to the point, and especially when you've got elderly people there, you know, how many times are they going to be displaced? How many times are cars going to be ruined? So if there's anything the city could do, or any suggestions of who we could talk to about this problem?
Les, did you, I said that Andy is over the drainage, I don't know.
There is potential litigation regarding this. Insurance is handling it, also engineers are looking at what options the city may or may not have for that area. I know there's a plan to address it, but be in fact, we're in process of acquiring some property for that area to address it.
Good, okay. Yeah, I understand that, but any help at this point would be greatly appreciated, because like tonight, they've already put the sandbags up and things like that at 12 o'clock today for fear it will flood again, so anything that the council could do, or the city could do, would be greatly appreciated there.
Concerns are duly noted, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to council comments. We have Councilperson White.
Thank you. Okay, a few discussions with Chief Hedrick and the Fire Union President Joe Hurt, who's here today, I think, regarding our appointment to the Fire Mayor Commission. And what we'd like to, what I'd like to do is, in conversations with them, is there's a gentleman by the name of Sam Smith, who is interested in accepting an appointment on the Fire Mayor Commission, and when that position came up before, they increased the diversity of the commission, so he was not considered. And I believe Jeff Frye has been on the commission since its inception, and what I'd like to do here is make a motion to replace Mr. Frye with Sam Smith.
Mr. Frye currently sits on the commission.
That's not one that we have to wait for an end of a term or anything like that? It's?
No.
Is it at will?
Yeah, it's by statute, it's at our discretion. So I make that motion?
I'll second it. Very well may pass, but I'm not going to, I'll vote no on that, and I don't know Mr. Frye, I don't know Mr. Smith, but I have a lot of questions, and in the council comments section, I don't even know what my questions are, because I know I got a lot of them, so I'm going to vote no, but that don't mean it will be no forever, that just means I got a lot of questions.
So do you have a motion in a second? Is there any further discussion?
I agree with Mr. Hawkins, I think if anything, it probably should be on the agenda, so people could do a little research ahead of time, rather than it being thrown out at the end of the meeting, so I'll be voting no.
I had talked with some firemen earlier in the year about that position of the Fire Mayor Board, and at that point, the fireman that I had talked to was suggesting that Cornelius Sue Wright be appointed to that position that Mr. Frye, at the end of his terms. At this point, I would, I'm like you, I would like to know who Sam Smith is before he would give my vote for this position.
Would you like to speak on who he is?
With permission, so that's completely understandable that there's questions. Mr. Frye has been on there since the inception of the commission. There's been some concerns from a lot of our members, and it is an at-will appointment. What Councilman White was speaking of, we had a couple of other open spots, and Sam Smith approached us, being interested. He's an executive with Stockyards Bank, he was the director of the Kentucky Derby Festival, and he's a, he's a very respectable local guy, volunteers at the church at Sacred Heart often. We needed some minority representation on our board, and so we were able to get Jimmy Dyson and T.A. Spalding on our board, so we've met that need of minorities. We welcome more minorities on the board, by all means, but this is just somebody that's interested. The board doesn't pay much, I mean, a hundred bucks a month, so just to have someone that's interested, that is also a well-respected, educated person, that's why it was kind of recommended that Mr. Smith be looked into, but by all means, it's your all's appointment, so anybody would be welcome. It's just, we just finished hiring, or our hiring process, we just finished our promotional process, so if we're going to be bringing in like a breath of fresh air, now would be a great time, because there's not a big, give them time to get acclimated to the board and kind of learn the ropes before any, any next processes, so that's the idea. Anytime we've got somebody as qualified as Mr. Smith that's interested, certainly if one of our appointments comes open, I would, I'll be eyeing him, but at the time that we had an opportunity to appoint someone, we needed some minority representation on our board, and so we went that direction, so. And as far as specific concerns, I don't care to air anybody's, I don't want to run anybody down in a public meeting, so.
I appreciate that, but I have talked with you, and I know this has been an ongoing conversation, so.
For probably a year.
And I have attended some of those fire sessions, so. Okay, so we do have a motion in a second that's promised, so do you want to, we'll move forward with that then, stands your motion in your second? Okay, and we will move forward on that. So all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
We have to run call, because I don't know who else has. Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Stotny.
Go.
Councilperson Yon.
Hi.
Councilperson. Councilperson Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Nope.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Samuel?
No.
Councilperson Ellis?
No.
Council President Gill?
Aye.
Five to four passes.
I have no more comment. I have no more comment.
Councilperson Stodden?
Everybody get out to vote tomorrow, that's it.
Councilperson Yon?
I'll echo that.
Councilperson Maples?
You can notice Captain Orland in the back of the room. He will be sporting a beard for the month of November, bringing it up every year, because it's not typical that public servants be with beard and uniform, but they will be making a donation, each officer will, to the shop of the cop. My department's doing it, too. It's a little weird to see guys in beards and uniform. So I just wanted to recommend, recognize them for their donation, and maybe go vote tomorrow.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Go vote. Good luck to all the candidates who are running. And I think we all up here, plus one, are glad it's not us, because it takes over your life, and it's a pain. I'm glad everybody does that and puts their neck out, it really does challenge your family. And so I'm thankful that people step up for the community, whatever side of the political spectrum they're on. And my government class will be sorry to see it end, because we dissect and make fun of all the thirty mailers a day that we get. And so we will know what to do with ourselves for ten minutes a day, not laughing at your mailers. So anyway.
I got Larry, I got your text.
I have, I just sent you all the statute for replacements.
So are we fine?
Okay, you're fine.
Okay. Councilperson Owen?
Just one thing, I wanted to call attention to one of the spreadsheets that Heather pointed, or gave us right before the meeting started. And it's the one with the green header that says City of Jeff Master Bank List, two thousand eighteen. If you go all the way to the bottom and all the way to the right, you see a figure, it's four hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-one cents. That number represents the total amount of interest the city has earned because of the way that our dollars on hand are invested solely at the discretion of the finance department, and specifically Heather. Half a million dollars that we've earned in two thousand eighteen alone, just on investments because of the good work that they do up on the third floor. It is way too often overlooked, and it shouldn't be, because those are our dollars we can use for taxpayers that didn't come directly from the taxpayers. So thank you, Heather, and thank you for your team that's upstairs.
So you just looked at that small print and picked that out?
Yeah.
Or do you know this forehand?
No, no. She, well, she gives us this at the beginning of each month, and you can, I'm sorry.
It's only nine months.
Yeah, and it's. Well, I was going to say, it's only through September, and I mean, you can read through and see where each investment is and what the yield is and the percentages. If you like that sort of thing, like I do, that's great, but the bottom number, all the way to the right, is the one that matters, and it's half a million. So kudos to you. Thank you. That's all.
Yes, thank you. Councilperson Ellis?
Yeah, the one thing that I would like to, I would like to echo Bobby Campbell about Andrew Williams. I served with Andrew Williams. We have been good friends for a long time. We were also church members and community members together, and Andrew is truly a loss to our community. I just ask that we keep his family in our prayers and to lift him up. And I, for the candidate here, I give my best wishes to you. This time tomorrow night, whatever your excitement be, may it be great.
Councilperson Samuel?
Just a comment about next meeting, Andy Crouch, city engineer, will be on our agenda to talk, give an update on our sidewalk master plan. Talk about what's been done in eighteen and what's coming up in nineteen. Then I echo the other sentiments about the candidates and Andrew as well.
Okay, well, I hope everybody does get out and vote. I know city services and the city hall is closed for tomorrow. I know I've gotten several texts, so there'll be no trash pickup tomorrow. I always say that publicly, that city services will not be, well, we'll still have police and fire, but the street department will have.
I don't want everybody to go back there and say, I gave them all the day off.
Election day?
No, I did not.
Election day with no public safety, my God.
If any of the, I was under the impression that I guess not all council people were able to talk to on the matter that Dustin did. So if anybody wants to, Joe, if you could stick around, maybe if anybody has any questions privately to discuss that with you, I appreciate that.
And I forgot to say publicly, congratulations on the grand job.
Yes. Good luck, and with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Since I'm here. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right.